Well, welcome. It's that time of year again where we're going into a special town meeting discussing capital and some other projects. So as always, we want to get together and let you know, not to influence you as to whether you should support or not support an article, but just to let you know both sides of the articles that we'll be talking about at town meeting and spending your money. So why don't we start with introductions?
Chris Moore, member of the FinCom.
Mike Soras.
Lieutenant, false chairman this year of the FinCom.
Yep. Mike Soras, member of the FinCom.
I was gonna say, this is your year to be chairman. Pretty uneventful agenda coming up.
It really is, Alan, and we haven't seen that in a while, to be perfectly honest with you. And we always joke at the end of each show or the beginning of what article is gonna be the hot debate, the hot button issue. And I don't think there's anything to talk about here on what could be the hot button issue, because I don't think there is one. It's pretty straightforward, there really isn't anything controversial on here. You know, once again, through the hard work of all the department heads and everything to weed out any, you know, issues that we have and make sure that we're addressing them properly, so.
Although we are frequently surprised by which one ends up being.
There's gotta be one article that is the least important, that'll take up an hour.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's just, it's somewhere in the policy statement.
Yeah.
Okay, number one, we start out with sprinkler pipes in town hall.
Yeah, this is something that has been on the long-term capital plan for quite a while now. Unfortunately, due to complications in which we have sprinklers now leaking, the problem has, you know, pushed itself forward and it can't wait any longer. This particular article's for $28,000 for the repair of the sprinkler heads at the town hall. You know, once again, very straightforward, we had a favorable recommendation on this one.
I mean, there's no choice. You start seeing leaks, we know we're gonna spend it, might as well get it over with.
Yep.
And we went favorable as a finance committee.
Mm-hmm.
Number two, this is gonna be a little, the special injury account, this is gonna be a little deviation from the past.
Yeah, so it's important to note that we're not adding any additional benefit, we're simply creating a separate account, the special injury leave account that's going to be funding firefighters and police when they're injured on duty. The advantage of doing it this way, as I understand it, is when we get third-party reimbursement, we can automatically put it back into this account to replenish it versus getting special appropriation for transferring those funds back into the account.
Yeah, and the idea is we're gonna put a quarter million in. It's not that we're gonna spend any more than we ever spent.
Right.
It just makes it easier administratively. And then once a year, we can look and say, well, was it, let's hope, this is the account I hope we really never spent a penny on. You know, was it a heavier year because more of our police and firefighters got injured on duty or not? If it was, we can just replenish it.
Right.
So the quarter million dollars is not money that we're anticipating spending this year.
No, that's correct. And people have asked me, they're like, oh, why have we done this before? We weren't able to do this before. Governor Baker just signed the state's modernization act and kind of unmudied the waters between state government and local government, and it gave us the ability to create this fund, in which, as you mentioned, it's kind of a revolving fund where really the door is only going one way. Every once in a while, on a third-party claim, money will go into it. But on the whole, what it allows us to do is if there is a big year, there doesn't need to be any special transfers or anything like that. And anything that stays in there will be in there for the next year. And if we need to fund it a smaller amount than we usually do budgetarily, we can go ahead and do that.
Which is replenishment as needed.
Yeah.
Article three, the audit that we can't say no to.
Yeah, exactly. And this was a $9,000 audit that needed to be done. Treasure Pillar was able to keep $5,000 of his budget from another project, and we're gonna apply that to it. So really, we're only looking for $4,000 this year. It's, we gotta keep up with Gatsby, and it's, we can't say no.
I mean, this is an audit for OPEB, you don't have a choice.
That's correct. Yep.
You must do an audit to tell you what status you're in, what's your current situation.
And you have to do it every two years.
And it's nine grand, and luckily, Chris has some money that he was holding aside, so we only have to allocate a little over half.
Yeah.
Article four, drawings, engineering drawings.
So this article is to fund the, or to fund 75% of the drawings and engineering plan for the 140 Route 16. They're going to redesign that intersection and improve it by adding left-turn-only lanes. So they're going to be expanding the road, they're gonna do some land takings. And this funding helps to do 75% of the planning and engineering.
And again, people can get confused. This funds 75% of the drawings.
Of the drawings.
You know, the $90,000 is not 75% of the money.
Correct.
That's where everybody gets confused, and they're like, okay, the last 25 could cost you $50,000 to $100,000. So it's not 75% of the work. It's literally, if you had 100 drawings needed, this is 75 of those drawings, but they could be some of the easiest, cheapest drawings.
Yeah, there's no question. We've been on the tip, the state's tip list for this project, and we've actually been advanced several times, and we just got advanced again, and we're into 18 on this project. So this project is coming quicker than we thought. It's gonna be a fantastic project for Milford. That intersection at 16 and 140 is.
Challenging.
Yeah, that's a good word for it. And thankfully, you know, Scott Chris Foley's been good on staying on top and keeping us in line on this. And you're gonna see later on, we're gonna address this tip program as well with some land acquisition costs.
Again, favorable, because you really can't do anything.
Yep.
Now, I do want the six loyal viewers to know, we started something different this year, where we're putting up the actual proposals and all the information on any article that the, I guess we're calling it the short-term capital now, so we don't confuse it with our stabilization, which is really long-term. But the short-term capital committee is getting full proposals now. No longer the one-sheeters that used to come in, and we're putting them up on the website. So this will be one that you can go look on the website and see what you're getting. So town meeting members or anybody who wants to know a little more can go do some due diligence.
Absolutely, and I have to compliment you on this, I mean, this was your idea to get it done, and I can't say enough about what a great tool it is for both town meeting members and residents of the town to be able to get a more in-depth look, because, you know, when you're getting these reports and you're getting a one-paragraph snapshot on spending $1.1 million on a ladder truck, you really can't grasp the need or what exactly we're purchasing. When you have the 64-page report or whatever it is available to you online, you really can see what your money is paying for, as well as pictures even of the ladder truck of before, not that we're talking about this here, but just as an example of what we're actually doing, so.
So we roll into the armory or the youth center, and they had some service that needs done, some repairs.
Yeah, they have a leaking, some leaking pipes as part of their heating system. So they've narrowed it down to two possibilities, and this will fund the repairs that they believe is required to get that up and running without leaking. It's still up in the air whether or not they're going to need this full amount, because they haven't yet turned the system on. So once they turn on the system and see whether or not their initial repair works or not, this is kind of gonna be in there as a.
They have put a Band-Aid on it, some bubble gum, and if it holds, then they'll need only part or none of.
Correct.
This money. But this has nothing to do with air conditioning, which we'll get into later. This is the core heating system pipes that are leaking.
And we've been assured by the building committee that they were gonna have this heat turned on before town meeting. So we're gonna know when we vote on this. We don't know right now, but we will know at the time that we vote on this whether or not this is even gonna be needed. And we could simply just be passing this article over, if in fact, everything's fine.
If we don't need the money. So now, we roll into the big one for the year. We've been, we started the short-term capital account because of this article, you know, kinda like when we're saying there's a school coming, and kept saying there's a new Tui toy coming, a new ladder truck, 1.1 million.
Absolutely, and for vehicles and any capital in general, I mean, this is a lot of money. This is something we've been talking more for a long time. As you even mentioned, we even created a whole separate fund just because of this truck, and not for the truck specifically, but for large asset purchases that we need to plan for in the future, and that's what the creation of this fund was for. I am happy to say that due to our financial position, this $1.1 million truck isn't even gonna be paid for from that.
We're gonna pay it out of free cash.
We're gonna pay it out of free cash.
What a wonderful position to be in.
It's been a good year.
And I know that, you know, our beloved Mark will have a heart attack when I say, this kind of investment, not spending it, will help, because there's a school coming.
No question.
You know, 10 years from now or so, there'll be renovations at the high school.
Yep. And the other thing that I think that people really need to consider with the ladder truck, and they say, well, I still see it out when it's driving around town. 14 months from order time to equipment to delivery time on a vehicle like this. So if we ordered it today, we wouldn't even get it for 14 months. So you almost have to forecast a little bit and kinda hedge your bets a little bit that, you know, we are gonna need this, and we don't wanna be caught with our britches down and find out that we need to be borrowing ladder trucks or using, you know, community.
And hats off to Chief Tui, because I know when we asked him, if we had to, could you put it off a year? He said, yes, if I had to.
Right.
I mean, that embodies the whole attitude and what makes Milford work. Then we went through it and said, okay, I don't know how, but fire trucks are increasing about 7% a year in price. Okay, that's 70 grand. Because I'm thinking, the Fire Association says you should have 15 years of use on a ladder truck.
Yeah.
Well, Chief Tui's at 20.
Yep.
And now.
It'll be 22 once we get the truck.
Well, now you figure out it's 50 grand a year to own the truck. But if we're going up 7% average, that's 70 grand just on the price increases. And he's spending between 26 and 60 grand a year in maintenance.
Exactly.
And that's gone up in the last few years as the truck has.
Gotten older.
Gotten older, you know, as most vehicles do, they require more maintenance and repair, so.
And most people, too. But, you know, you think about it, and that's what drove the subcommittee and the full committee to vote favorably on buying the truck this year, is we finally hit that tip point. At 15 years, it was better to keep the truck than to replace it. As we get to 20, and as you say, it'll be 21 and a half before we get the new truck online.
Yeah, and it just, you know, it's an essential piece of equipment for the chief. I mean, it makes a lot of calls, we need it, it's the only, we have to have it.
And the people have asked, will the ladder truck we're buying be able to reach all the buildings in Milford? Because that's always a question, you know. And number two, why do you need one that's so long? And then when you figure out the angle, because it may go up, you know, five stories, if it was straight up, it'd be bigger than anything we need.
Yeah.
But I don't think you wanna park the truck.
Right against.
Right against a burning building.
And I wouldn't wanna be the guy walking straight up a ladder either.
That's true.
So, next one, pretty easy. Article seven is the fourth payment of the police computers.
Yeah, so the chief came to us three years ago and asked to replace all his computers at the police station. He came with a four-year plan to do all the computers, you know, a quarter of it at a time, so this would be the final $25,000 payment out of $100,000. So it was fully expected, fully planned for, and it's.
You really don't have a choice. Four years, three years ago, when we said, we're asking you for 25 grand, but understand, town meeting members, you're committing 100 grand.
Right.
Because you can't halfway through the contract say, oh, never mind, we don't want them.
Right.
Article eight, a new tractor for the Parks Department.
Yeah, they have a 12-year-old tractor right now that is pretty rundown, and they're looking for a replacement on it. The cost on the replacement is $30,000. It's not just a lawnmower, that's what people come up and they say to me, they said, I've never seen a lawnmower that's $30,000. It does more than mow, it has attachments for weed whacking, grass collection. You know, when you're mowing these huge fields, it's not like when you're at home and you can go around two times, you gotta empty the bag. You know, they need large, you know, attachments to hold the grass. I mean, it's more than a regular.
It's an octopus.
Yeah.
You know, it's got all the different arms, and when you think about it, like the trail that we all love, it needs that long arm to bring the mower down.
Yep.
This one had a cracked deck, so there really wasn't any question in our mind as to, do they need to replace it?
Right. And this one, it will actually make them a little bit more efficient, so, I mean, yes, we could buy a lawnmower, but then you'd be hiring more staff, because it would take you much longer to do all the things it requires you to do. So this will make our staff more efficient.
Article nine, setting up an account to receive cable money.
Absolutely, and look at the beautiful studio we're in, is coming from that money. Now, this is something that was required by the state as well, this is something that we could not, not do, okay? And really, in essence, all this does is, it's protecting local television studios and making sure that they receive the money that they rightfully do, that we pay every month on our horizon.
This has no impact on Milford.
Absolutely zero impact. But what it is, is on all your bills, you know, you get that quarter or 50 cents.
Franchise fee, $2.90 a month.
And what that is, it's collected by them, then it's given to the municipalities, and the municipalities pass it along to the TV stations. Well, they're finding that in some communities that are not as well-off as Milford, they're holding back a little bit on that money, and they're not legally able to do that. And what this new law does is it says, nope, not happening, this money's gonna go directly into its own fund, you're not gonna be able to touch it, and it's gonna go for what is exactly it's intended for, and what all the people who have cable and pay for that, you know, to fund studios like this that we get a lot of use of, and that's really all it is.
So we roll to article 10, new doors in Stacy.
Yeah, so the fire doors at Stacy Middle School require replacement, and the ones, when you, when you replace the door, obviously, they're gonna have to be built to code. The current code is, or currently, we're not up to code, so we have to do some improvements as we replace these doors. So there's a total of 29 doors that are being replaced at Stacy, so.
Yeah, the doors just aren't working with the reliability standard that we need, because when the, if there's a fire in a school, we really don't wanna have doors that kinda work.
Right.
Or that some of them work and some of them don't. So.
No question. And to explain simply to people, these are the doors that when the fire alarm goes off, the magnets get triggered and all the fire doors close to keep the fire contained. They don't work now. And we're not doing this because we're out of code, we've been out of code for a while.
Right.
Okay, we're doing this because the doors basically don't work anymore. So really, that's what it is, so. And they're gonna try to use some doors that they currently have, you know, and this may not be the.
Yeah, wherever Rob can repurpose a door.
Exactly.
Exactly. So the most it's gonna cost us right now is $200,000, and we think that there'll be money returned to us from that.
But either way, it's something that you can't.
It's a safety concern and.
You can't debate, how safe do we want our children?
Exactly.
So. Article 11, air conditioning for the library computers.
Oh, right now, there's a, you would call it a server room, I guess, loosely termed. It's a room that has no ventilation, no cooling system in it whatsoever. Anyone who knows anything with technology is, hot is bad, okay? Any sort of heat-controlled CPU, it slows everything down on your computers, so what they need is they need to get down the core temperatures of the servers, okay? They initially are gonna try putting slats in the door, just to let some of the cool air from the library into the room to help get it down in temperature, which to me, a lot of us think will solve the issue. If they do not, they're gonna look for those, one of those interior cooling fans, air conditioning fans, which is probably about $10,000, and they're gonna use that to help cool the room down. They assured us that they're gonna try the slats first, try the egg, you know, the egg cartons up in the ceiling to try to get the temperature down, but if they can't, they're gonna go to one of those units to help cool down the room.
Yeah, and the agreement was, okay, the first thing you do is you put the louvers in the door, because it's amazing. I mean, there's three things you check on any server room, because this was not designed as a server room. It used to be the communications room where you had your little phone switch, which generates no heat. You make sure that the bottom of the door isn't sealed against the carpet, you put the louvers in the bottom of the door, and you replace ceiling tile with egg crate.
It's also important to note that right now, what they're doing as a workaround is they're leaving that door open, which obviously.
Which works!
Which works, but it also creates a security concern. I mean, you could have little kids wander in there and start pushing buttons, God knows what they're.
Pulling wires.
Pulling wires, or.
Yeah, it's not even, you're not looking for the malicious person, you know.
No, yeah.
That sneaks in there to hurt your IT. Somebody just wanders in and bumps against the blades, and all of a sudden, IT goes dark.
Yep.
But to their credit, they're trying some things. We're recommending favorable, but with the agreement that you're gonna come back and show us the data of what you tried before you go and get one of these interior air conditioning units. Article 12, the parking lot.
So this is land behind the former Milford National Bank on Main Street, right next to the police station. Currently, the police do use that land to park their vehicles. So this is basically the Milford National Bank gifting that land to the police, well, to the town that will be used for the police station. So this is to accept that as a gift.
So no change, we've been using it, we're using it, we just wanna keep using it.
Absolutely, and to be honest with you, it's, not that it's no change, I mean, that building's for sale. I mean, the Milford National Bank and Kevin Mead have been very nice to this town about letting the police department use that. If this building changes hands and gets bought by XYZ Company, they may say.
They should say, that's my parking lot.
That's my parking lot. I have employee parking back there, or I wanna put more customer parking back there. So, you know, you take it when you can get it, and they were nice enough to let us use it in the past, there's a for-sale sign on it, that building could change hands at any time, and if we don't take it, and the next tenants come in and say. And the police department does use that, I mean, that's, they're jam-packed in there.
If they lose that, we'd be looking for.
No question.
Land taking to make.
Land taking to build a parking lot.
Yep, no question.
Article 13, controller for the Memorial Elevator.
Yeah, this article's gonna be passed over, we were told by the school department that.
They found the parts.
Yes, and they thought that with, with the parts that they have available to be purchased, that this elevator can be maintained for another three to four years, they're thinking. And that's what bit us on the last elevator was parts. So they said with this, they're gonna pass over because they can, they can maintain it the way it is.
Yeah, what's different about this elevator versus the one in Stacy is that they were made by different companies, and so, like Chris was saying, for the elevator at Stacy, the parts were no longer available, versus at Memorial, they still are, so we can still maintain it.
We can still go another year or two.
Yeah.
Article.
Hopefully longer.
Article 14, orange slip.
Yeah, so this is to discontinue orange slip as a public way. The hospital currently owns all the property around that, and so basically, this would just make it official that that's no longer a public way, that that's going to be part of the Milford Hospital property.
My understanding is it's like a Gilligan's Island thing, they've just absolutely bought all the land around it, now you got a silly island in the middle.
Correct.
That is useless to anybody but the hospital.
Yeah, it's a dead-end circle, and they can't use that because it's technically a public way.
But no public can use it, because there's nowhere to go. Okay, article 15, million dollars towards our pension fund.
This is one that can be confusing to some people. And to keep it simple, we owe pensions, obviously, for all our employees. It's about, it's a large chunk of change, 60, I think, $65 million.
And it's the OPEB, this is the other post-employment benefits.
Yes.
It's not the pensions.
Yeah.
Because people say, women, the employees pay into their own pension, right?
Yeah. They do, but there's money that, it's always constantly being backfilled by the current employees paying in. You need rate of return to be able to pay the, you know, the increased numbers and everything. Well, the state is mandated that you need to fund payment on this, and they monitor your schedule, and they say you need to have this paid by X date. And there's a formula, and it's very complicated, on saying what step you need to be on. Most of the state is on 2026.
36.
36, excuse me, is what you're mandated to be funded for. We have, because of the planning for the Woodland School and that type of stuff, we really haven't stayed on par with what we needed to, okay? The scare is that they're gonna come in here and see that, and they're gonna alter our end date, and it's almost like if someone told you your 30-year mortgage was now due in 28 years.
Right.
Okay? You'd see that your monthly payment would go up. If you have a $200,000 mortgage and you're down two years, you may see your bill go up $100, which is part of our operational budget. When you owe $65 million, and they bump it up two years, you see a huge change in what we'd have to put in our operational budget in order to be able to fund this. What this million dollars does simply is it is applied toward the liability and gets us back on pace to where we should've been, so that we're not technically, I would say, falling behind.
So we won't get double-whammied some year if somebody comes in, does an audit, and says, you're supposed to be on track to be fully funded.
Yep.
For your pension retirement system.
Yep.
By 36. Well, yeah, you are now.
Exactly. And the thing about the audit is, is that when they set the number, that's it permanently.
Right.
You can't, you can't catch up and put in an appeal or anything, that's gonna be the number, and it's never gonna change, until, well, until another audit comes. But this was an important, and this was a great thing, that we had the money available, it really achieved a good thing, and like I said, it's a little complicated, but I put it in like paying your mortgage off a little bit earlier.
26, opioid program.
I think we skipped a couple.
Did I? I mean, 16, not 26.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry. Opioid program.
Okay, so this is the, the state has granted us a grant, and it's given us some money to fight the, do some outreach for the opioid crisis. So what we're doing is we're raising funds to match some of those dollars, so they granted us $84,000. We are putting in an extra $28,000, that ends up working out to $1 per resident. Other towns can also participate in this, as long as they contribute $1 per resident of their town. So, you know, obviously, there's an opioid crisis that's going on, we can't ignore it, it's gonna cost us money in other ways. So we're trying to get ahead of it and getting people help versus.
And again, the amazing part is, you know, when we grew up, you think of the heroin addict, is, you know, creepy person at the end of an alleyway in the inner city. And Sheriff Flew and Vangelitis, I mean, we've had people come on who have said, Joe Early, the DA, no, this is your neighbor's son or daughter who got hurt in a sports injury, got hooked on oxy without even meaning to, and now can't afford the oxy that are going to, you know, heroin.
Yeah.
So to me, $28,000 seems like a really good investment.
Oh, it is. And this is a problem that, I mean, if you don't know someone, or it's a real problem in this town. This is one of the articles I feel extremely strongly about, and this is something that I said that I'm committed to expanding in the future, whether it's dollar amount, getting it into a permanent operational budget, not just going and doing it article by article. I feel that strongly about it, and I think a lot of people do, on what a problem is in this town. And the costs involved afterwards are astronomical. And it's important to note that this is not, this money is not going toward arrests, it's not, it's going for treatment afterwards, alternative things, therapy, that type of stuff. This isn't going for law enforcement, and not that there isn't a need there, but, you know, the real need for education and for treatment afterwards is.
Article 17, these are always the fun ones, the planning board ones.
You wanna take this, Chris?
Yeah, every one of the planning board ones, I need a legend and a roadmap to get through.
We're not zoning board experts.
There's no question.
I think it's simple. It deals with employee parking.
Exactly. And there was a debate on what exactly frontage is, what exactly parking is, to be honest with you. This isn't our purview. It has no financial implications whatsoever.
Refer to sponsor, move on.
We refer to sponsors, exactly right.
Now, when we go to eighteen.
Both eighteen and nineteen.
And nineteen.
Okay, we'll take them both together because they both are fixing corrections on past town meeting misses, okay? This is not filling a position, okay? This is just reclassifying the dollar amount for those positions, like someone like the mosquito sprayer. We don't have a mosquito.
I think we have one yet.
We don't have one, but they have classifications. If we, for some reason, were to hire that person one day, they would be at $16.84 an hour. And we didn't have these classifications, and we're just making a fix on it. So, on both these, on the personnel board, we, both eighteen and nineteen, we, you know, we had a favorable recommendation.
And we go to twenty, stormwater.
So, this is $20,000. It will be the last $20,000 payment for our MS4 permit, but that's not to say that-
We've been complaining about it for how many years, and now I'm gonna miss it.
Yeah, we're gonna miss it, because after this, it's going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars every year. And basically, this is to comply with the EPA and their requirements. So, every year, we gotta do work towards, you know, just-
We've been complaining that they're forcing us, you know, to clean the catched basins more frequently, to do things that cost us 20 grand. And next year, when the new permit comes out, boy, will we be missing our $20,000.
I don't think there's any question, and this is something that's, it's never going away. So, it's something we just have to be prepared for.
Twenty-one, we start looking at new software for John Erickson.
Absolutely. He's got some software now that he's been using for years, and he's had this on the five-year plan for a long time. This'll get him up with a nice cloud-based system. It's really gonna help streamline the workflow. The issuance of permits, seeing all the information for the particular places that he goes to. It's just, it's a management software for his office, and really, it streamlines everything he does and-
And it opens it up to wireless, so the inspectors in the field can whip out their tablets-
Absolutely.
Update everything as they go. I mean, he had come to us three, four years ago and said, "I'm gonna need this." And we said, "Do you need it this year?" He goes, "No, I can live without it." So, for two or three years in a row, he's saying, "I can live without this." And finally, he said, "Nah, I really do need it now." So, again, hats off to somebody who is only spending our money when he has to.
Yeah, and it was $9,000.
And it gives him the modern tools that, again, helps him be efficient in everything he does. So, it's all about having our employees be efficient with their time.
Again, the complete proposal for this is on the website, the town main website. You can look it up. You can see all the data he gave us. We roll into twenty-two, the custom zoning article.
This is a zoning amendment to our zoning bylaw that changes what use is allowed in the business park zone. So, right now, there's a developer who's been struggling to find potential tenants for development in the business park zone. And they have found a prospect tenant, Restaurant Depot. They do wholesaling, not retailing, wholesaling. Unfortunately, it's not currently an allowable use in the business park zone. So, what they're intending to do is, by special permit, allow wholesaling in the business park zone.
Refer to sponsor.
Refer to, well-
This is another one we referred to sponsor. Any of the zoning articles that have fourteen little zeros and Xs and Os and arrows, I almost automatically figure this is going to sponsor.
Yeah, no, there is. But, I mean, the way we also looked at it too is that if that area gets developed, obviously, it has a good financial impact, both infrastructure-wise, if they were gonna need to do the exits and all that kinda stuff, so.
Twenty-three, the youth center. The armory committee came and said they were thinking about air conditioning.
Yeah. Obviously, we just finished that building. We spent a hefty amount of money. I mean, we're close to $6 million on that building. And then they came out and asked us for air conditioning. We had not been previously informed of their intent to put in air conditioning. We have a stance on the FinCom, I have a very strong stance on it, and it gets me in trouble sometimes, about capital not being put on the five-year plan and then being proposed as a last second, and have it not be an emergency.
Well, the good news is, now that we have a more stringent process in capital proposals, it caught up to them where we asked, "Do you have the plan? Does it answer the five main criteria?" And they said, "Not yet." And we said, "Well, do you think you should wait?" And they said, "Yes."
Absolutely, and they were very, and, you know, the building committee said, "You know what? We agree with you." They've passed, they're gonna pass this article over, and they're gonna move the burden of selling this program over to the youth center, which, that's where it should be anyway. But because they were finishing up the building project, you know, Selectman Murray had taken on this article in which he's-
No, he brought it up, asked for the opinion. We talked, you know, both as the building committee and the finance committee. We said, "This just doesn't have the depth that the new proposals coming forward have when you're asking for town money." And, you know, to their credit, they said, "Okay, we'll pass it over till we're ready." Article twenty-four, another million dollars. Boy, that's a common number this year.
It is, but I, this is the happiest I've ever been to spend a million dollars, and I'm not kidding you. This finishes up one of the most unbelievable projects this town has ever done. And the fact that it's only a million dollars is due to the unbelievable work that the Woodland Building Committee did.
Because it should be three.
It should be three. It should be four. It should be five. It should be six. We had initially had thought we were gonna borrow $34 million, and now we're borrowing 28. It's just amazing.
We saved a lot of money by throwing pennies between Jonathan and Aldo and watching them stretch them into copper wire.
Yep. Those two and the entire Woodland Building Committee, I cannot give enough praise to, and I think everyone, you see them walking down the street, you should be patting them on the back, because they saved this town an unbelievable amount of money while increasing the scope. And if you don't have a chance, on October 30th, they're gonna have an open house for the town up there and a dedication. I strongly encourage the residents of Milford, because a lot of people have not had the ability to see this school yet, because it's, obviously, it's a school. You can't get in there.
And in about two weeks from this show, we'll actually be airing the open house. Because we did an open house with the Aldo and Jonathan show when they were building it. And now, we have a show where the new principal, Tim Kernan, walked us through. It's amazing. Absolutely amazing.
I haven't been in there, but I've seen pictures. It looks, it looks great.
It will blow your mind.
But you're right. This is, we're putting a million dollars to finish it, not three or four. So, better school, more capability, $2 million below budget. What more could we ask? Article twenty-five, another one with lots of Xs and Os.
Another zoning bylaw amendment. This was actually a very small change. It just changes a word, honestly. It adds any cha-, excuse me. In addition. It literally adds, "In addition."
Again, it's one of these, "Refer to sponsor, keep moving."
Yeah, it just clarifies the language.
Here's one where we're putting a couple hundred thousand dollars away, just in case.
This is what, when we were at our meeting, I asked people to take a leap of faith, and we don't usually do that on the FinCom. It's not something that we normally do. As we had talked about previously, the tip project up at Route 140 and Route 16 is coming, and it's coming closer, as I mentioned. The hospital intersection. In order to achieve what we need to achieve up there, we're going to need to acquire land, okay? And there's gonna be land takings. Obviously, with land takings, we don't get them for free. The people who have the land are gonna need to be compensated. At this point, we thought that putting $200,000 when we had the amount of money that we have now, and set it aside for that land acquisition would be a wise choice. When asking the selectmen and the administrator how much money they need, they said, "We have no idea."
How do you know?
So, with this, this $200,000, to be perfectly honest with you, it may not be enough. It may be way too much.
It may be too much, but it is, whatever it is, we'll deal with it.
Exactly. And whatever we don't use will fall to the bottom line, and if we need more, we'll allocate it at another town meeting, so. We thought it was a fair number to-
Article twenty-seven, at the beginning of this year, or the end of last year, when they reclassified positions, we said, "Is this gonna cost us money?" Well, here comes the bill.
Yeah, so, when Article Two passed, this past May meeting, they changed the way they calculate the compensation for Article Two personnel at Town Hall. And a lot of the budgets were underfunded because of the effects of the change. So, the total bill ends up being $18,000 for the net effect.
And that'll be added to every budget ad infinitum. This is a shift, not a one-time. This is a shift in the salary line.
And it's, you know, it could be $1,000 in this budget, six thou-
It's eighteen grand total.
Total of $18,000.
Now, Article twenty-eight, another one of those Xs and Os, more rezoning.
Absolutely. This is, if you want a landmarking, it's between Fayette Street and Exchange Street, from Ray and Dick's Bakery up to Warren Hella's office. I think most of the people who are listening to us will know exactly what we're talking about. In which, most of that is churches anyway, so really, there was no big change here, no financial impact whatsoever, so we refer to sponsor.
We run into twenty-nine. Now here, the firefighters settle their contract.
Yeah, so, the way we fund our budgets during contract negotiations is that we fund it at our current contract schedule. And once they're done with the negotiation and all is settled, then we add appropriation, or we make an appropriation for whatever additional is needed.
And that's what we're doing, is just making their budget whole.
This $90,000 will fix the budget essentially.
Article thirty, new toy for Scotty, big toy.
It's a very big toy, and once again, you had talked about the plans being online. I suggest that people look at this, because they look at $190,000, and they think, you know, that's a big truck, and wait till you see the pictures, it is. The big thing we did with this is that with this truck, our salt transfer has eaten away the bed of the other truck. We would need to rent a truck to be moving salt. It costs us between $45,000 to $75,000, depending on how much we need per year. If we have this truck, we don't have to spend this. The rate of return on that, between $45,000 and $75,000, this truck will pay for itself in four or five years.
And this is, you know, when you hear Peterbilt, eighteen-wheelers, you think of this luxury bed liner. This is the heart and soul Peterbilt, but there's not a lot of frill and-
Well, we'll make no mistake about it, this is a much bigger truck than we're currently replacing. However, it's going to be a much more useful truck, and in fact, we currently pay $60 a ton for salt. And if we haul it ourselves versus get delivery-
That's another saving as well.
We can actually save $10 per ton, and we use a lot of tonnage. I don't know the exact number, but it's in the thousands and thousands.
That adds into that $45 to $75,000.
The shed holds 4,500 tons.
Yes.
And I think we, depending on the year, we go through a couple, two to three sheds.
Exactly.
I mean, if nothing else, people should feel comfortable that the junior member of the finance committee knows how much we pay per ton. You know, it really does show the level of detail that, you know, $190,000 is a big number.
No question.
So, you know, you gotta really go through every little knit in line. This is literally a salt transport, eighteen-wheeler, dirt transport, I mean, he'll use it for a lot of different things.
He'll use it for plowing in the winter.
Oh, yeah, but I mean, just the salt, as I mentioned, we're trying to invest, and you're talking five years, and you're gonna pay for this truck.
So, we roll into Article thirty-one, where finally, the heating units on the ground floor are starting to hit the tipping point, or they finally hit the tipping point where we need to start replacing them.
Yeah, so, I mean, this is just, again, more maintenance at Town Hall. As equipment ages, I don't recall the exact age of these heating units, but they're old, they're aging, and the repair costs are getting high, so it's time to replace them.
Yeah, Paul Revere installed them, and he won't tell us what year he did it. Thirty-two, some confusion over the Fisk Mill Bridge.
Confusion, but good confusion. As we had talked about previously, this was a project that we needed to address. The bridge was failing, wasn't passing state inspection. We were told we had to fix it. The confusion obviously comes when now there isn't just one party fixing it, there's two. Between us and Upton, we need to organize our efforts.
Yeah, we have half the bridge, they have half the bridge.
Exactly, so we need to organize our efforts. We previously had done that with the engineering costs, in which we split them 50/50. They went and funded their half, we got it done, and now the engineering costs are telling us some news about fixing the bridge, that the bridge is gonna be $600,000 to fix instead of a million. Obviously, excellent news, $400,000 savings, so two for them, two for us. So, we were very excited to hear that. So, really, the end result would be $300,000 would be Milford's portion to fix the bridge. Once again, like we had done before, and he followed that, is that there's not a penny of this $300,000 is supposed to be spent until Upton allocates their $300,000. And Scott obviously knows that's the deal.
And the $300,000, Scott is even hoping-
Might be lower.
I mean, the abutment's what they worry about, the piece that keeps you from falling off the side. But the minute they start opening that up, if the deck, the actual surface needs replaced, we're gonna go the whole 600, which is still better than the minimum we thought.
And if we don't need to replace the deck, then we don't have to spend all that money. But at least it's there in the event, so we don't have a bridge out for six months in the event that we need it.
Article thirty-three, more Xs and Os, more rezoning. Referred to sponsor. I mean, at this point, it's to deal with the height of fences. Can't be higher than eight feet, but not our purview.
And my understanding is that it actually doesn't change any restrictions. It simply makes it in one central-
We had it in three or four different places.
We reference fences in many different spots of the zoning law.
This brings it all together.
Now, it brings it, adds a section where it just says, "Fences, here are your rules."
Article thirty-four, $700,000. We're paying off bonds.
Yeah. One of the strategies that the financial team had looked at is that with our financial position, we should be looking at projects like, because we have the cash, to be able to save the taxpayers some money. One of the things that Treasurer Chris Pilla had looked at is paying off some bonds that we were able to save some money on, and he looked at it, and he found a couple bonds totaling $710,000, which had an interest rate of 5%. By paying off these bonds, we save the taxpayers $160,000 in interest payments. We have the money available. $160,000 is a lot of money, and by prepaying these, like I said, we save that money. So, we thought that this was a wise investment, and to be honest with you, I don't think it's gonna be the last time we do something like this.
I hope not, because when we asked Chris, pull for us a listing of all the callable bonds, because some bonds you can't call without a penalty.
Yeah, and some aren't worth calling.
Right.
You know, if you've got something that's a percent and a quarter, percent and a half, hey-
Just leave it forever.
Just leave it forever.
But, you know, here, we're able to take some bonds that were done when interest rates were higher.
Exactly.
Pay them off without a penalty, and, you know, let's face it, we're lucky this year. We got some extra money. And we'll talk about that in a minute, but we save almost $200,000 by paying off 700 early. Hopefully, come spring, nothing has come up where we have to use our free cash, and we'll get into that in a minute. And we'll look at more callable bonds. Because anything that I can save, in this case, a third on by prepaying, and I've got the cash, and let's face it, our cash is earning what for interest?
Yeah, I just, it's, to me, it's a smart move. It frees us up both in the savings on the interest and on our operational budget every year. So, it's just, it's a smart move, and something I hope we continue to do.
And it's worth noting that the reason we're in a good financial position to begin with is because we're constantly looking at these opportunities to save money on the longer term, you know, while other towns simply aren't able to make those investments for savings. We are, we are in a position to do that, so we should continue to use those practices.
Now, Article thirty-five, putting away more money in the self-insurance account.
Yeah, the self-insurance fund, anytime, you know, a vehicle is damaged or, you know, god forbid, there's some sort of accident to a building, we insure our own buildings and vehicles and property. The fund that we use has gotten kinda low, and this is, this will add $300,000, a one-time $300,000 contribution to the fund to put it back at a more comfortable level.
And for those who were around when we had insurance policies, you know, back then, when they did the analysis, we found that by self-insuring, we were saving a few hundred thousand dollars a year. And what we end up doing, of course, the question comes out, is what happens if a meteor hits the town? You know, and you have something that's $10 million of a claim. We do have a policy. And I think, I can't remember the numbers, like $2 million deductible or something silly.
I think that's what it is. It's very high, yeah.
Yeah, but it really is, meteors against buildings and, you know, what is it, that TV show says Zombie Apocalypse? You know, it's gotta be something way, way, way out of whack.
Something major, yeah.
That we don't wanna drain our entire coffers over a one-time hit. So, the interest, all that was supposed to keep up over the last few years, the interest is nothing.
No question, and that's why the line has just, you know, it shifted a little bit lower than we want. It's gonna, this is just gonna pop right back up.
Okay, thirty-six, we talk about, and just to make it clear, I think we're now saying the stabilization is called the Long-Term Capital Stabilization Fund. And then we have the Short Term.
The Correa Fund.
Stop it. But, yeah, no, it's a long-term stabilization and the short-term capital, even though the short-term goes five to 10 years.
I know. We're gonna get new names, I promise.
Well, it's okay. I can figure it out now, because what we used to just call stabilization is long-term. Long-term stabilization. There's a school coming. We start now, so that when the next school comes, that hopefully, our kids are in the same position that we're in, because the people before us started planning 10, 12 years before us. Because the people before us started planning 10, 12 years before us. So we're looking at putting some money in stabilization.
Yes. We had normally, or we normally, we had budgeted, excuse me, at the, at the beginning of the year, a $500,000 contribution to the Long-Term Stabilization Account. This is money that's already been spoken for, already allocated. And everyone was in consensus with that's what we wanted to do. Our committee also thought that putting an extra million dollars into the Short-Term Capital Fund would be a prudent move. We had $2.8 million in free cash going into the spring, going into the regular town meeting, excuse me. And we thought by taking a million of that and putting that into the Short-Term Capital Fund would be a wise, wise move. Either way, whether we moved, brought it to the next town meeting or we saved it, either way, we weren't spending it.
Yeah, and the funny part was, I know a lot of the FinCom members, this just seemed like not a big deal. We didn't understand that the finance team had recommended-
Yeah.
-to leave the million in-
Free cash.
Free cash until the spring meeting. So we voted to say, "Now, let's put it into the short-term." But no disrespect was meant to the financial team. A number of us just missed it. And I think a lot of it is because the finance committee has such faith in town meeting members. You know, everybody's like, "Well, it takes three-quarters or two-thirds, two-thirds of a vote to get it out." Well, yeah. If it's the right thing.
But if we need it, and it's the right thing.
Town meetings always supported the right ideas.
Right.
So going to a town meeting and saying, "I need this money because, because," and saying, "I need two-thirds of you," I don't worry about that at all because if I can't convince two-thirds of the town meeting to vote for it, maybe we shouldn't do it at that point. But, you know, I did wanna make just a personal note, because a few of us just missed it. You know, if we'd really thought, well, the finance team had a formal vote on it, we would've supported them because we always support each other.
And once again, we, and, and I apologize, I let arguments get a little, you know, wayward because it really, we're saving either way.
Yeah.
We're not spending it.
Right.
So when it's all said and done, it, it, as I would say, at the end of the day, we, that million dollars is not gone.
Right.
It's just in a different place.
And we can go get it. If something happened-
That's exactly right.
And we had a very unique opportunity to buy a building or something.
Yep.
I am convinced if it's the right move, we'll get the money back.
Absolutely.
But I did wanna say formally, at least for the two or three people I've talked to.
Yep.
Sorry, finance team, we missed it. You know, if we'd really thought about it, we would've supported it because you're not spending it.
Yep.
You're just holding on to it.
And that's why, so that's, and that's what I feel like.
And the last one, number 37.
This is my favorite article. It's money back to the taxpayer. We had originally budgeted $2 million to bring forward to the-
1.8.
Excuse me, 1.8. And we're actually gonna be able to give 2.4 million back to the taxpayer. So it's great. It's, it's the taxpayer's money to begin with. If we didn't need it, we should absolutely give it back. So, you know, here's your change. Thank you.
Absolutely. And this is where, once again, I'm gonna stand up and clap for the performance of the department heads by the members of the finance committee, the selectmen, the town administrator, the finance team led by Zach. I mean, I can't praise enough people. Not many people can sit there and say, "We have 3.2 million in excess levy capacity and we have 1.8 million in free cash going into our annual town meeting and we just paid for a 1.1 million fire truck with cash." We're in a very good place. The public who paid their taxes, and as you say it and I say it, they deserve their change. This 2.4 million dollars should go back to the taxpayers. It should go back to offset their, their bill that they get every quarter because we didn't spend it and it's not because we overtaxed them. I talk to people and they say, "Well, how can you have $6 million left over?" And that was the big question about free cash. And that's the question that got raised to me more than anything else. Free cash is a very complicated formula and sometimes even I don't understand it, okay? The $6 million was due to, we carried a million dollars forward from the previous town meeting. We had insurance savings, okay? We had circuit breaker money that fell to the bottom line. We had a lot of things happen. We really, in the end, only had $2.5 million in budgetary free cash, and that's what I would like to call it. We have a $110 million budget. We were off by $2.5 million. As I said at our meeting and I say all the time, when my son comes home and he got a 97 or a 98 on his science test, how can I possibly look to him and say anything but "You did a darn good job"?
Shame on you. Where's my other 2%?
You know? So, and that's where we really stand here. And like I said, it's through a lot of hard work. People will look at town meetings and they talk about how discussion is, is short and, you know, even at our FinCom meetings, they're like, "I don't understand. How can you vote on something in 20 minutes?" Well, it's not 20 minutes.